Hi all, we're going to get ready to get started here. We are here for City Council Bill 20-0557, Baltimore City Administrative Procedure Act Regulations. This is the Judiciary Committee, Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Member of the Committee, and Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, who is co-sponsor of the bill with Councilwoman Shannon Snead. Joining us from Mayor Young's office is Matt Stegman and Nina Themelis. Joining us from Council President Brandon Scott's office is Caitlin Young. I know we're going to be hearing extensively from Victor Vela from the Department of Law and Tony DeFranco from the Department of Legislative Reference. We are going to start off with, this is, I think there's a lot of complicated detail in this bill. It's one of the reasons that we had a number of meetings prior to this hearing with the agency officials and the President's Office and the Mayor's Office to really, you know, work through some of the nuance in the bill. So I appreciate the two co-sponsors for your willingness to do that, to, I think, get us to a place where we can have a much more smooth hearing. I expect this to be a lengthy hearing at a minimum. So with that, I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Snead and/or Councilman Dorsey for brief introductory remarks before we get started.
Good morning, everyone. This is, I know as council members, we've heard and we've seen a lot of our constituents reach out to us for a number of different things, and sometimes it often doesn't make sense to another group of why we're doing certain things or why we asked for studies and we just wanted to all make sense as council members. And so this bill is really a good way of understanding why we do certain things, having rules and regulations. So we're just not working on one half of the city, but we are essentially have a process of why we're doing something, in a process for Baltimore city residents to find more information on different laws that we want to do and different policies that we want to see that will affect the everyday citizen. So this is why we essentially are doing this bill. And like you said, it is very complex and kind of alluded in a way, but it still makes sense. Every other jurisdiction has, when we're talking about Howard County, Montgomery County to Prince George's County, even the federal government and the state have a Rules and Regulations Act. So I'll kick it over to my colleague, Councilman Ryan Dorsey.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to hear this bill and to explain, you know, how I see this. And, you know, as usual, my colleague, Councilwoman Snead, is able to speak to the kind of everyday citizens' kind of concerns while I'm kind of the guy going, well, here's the little wonky little details and the technicalities and all that. So I just want to take a moment to review a little bit of what this bill does or the kind of the broad strokes of what this bill does for everybody here. As a reminder, some may have read this bill, you know, weeks ago or so. The bill creates a basic process by which agencies can adopt rules and regulations. We have no formalized standardized process for the city. As Councilwoman Snead said, other jurisdictions throughout Maryland have this. In fact, we're the only major jurisdiction that doesn't have it. Every single state in the country has an Administrative Procedures Act, and of course, the federal government has one. We are the only jurisdiction in the state that does not have one, a major jurisdiction. And so this creates a formal process that does not exist now, that requires agencies to submit proposed rules and regulations to the Law Department, to have them reviewed for legality before then going up for a public comment period for 30 days, only after which may the rule or regulation go into effect and during which time the council has an opportunity to put the brakes on things if we see that the rule or regulation is not in keeping with the intent of the law that authorized the rule or regulation to be created. If we say, hey, look, you guys are like really missing the mark here, we can hold a hearing on this, we can hold it up, we can, you know, speak to the public about it, and the public can increase their public comment to the agency, saying, we don't think that this rule or regulation hits the mark. This also allows for DLR to go back through the code for all the various places where the code currently says to adopt a rule or regulation, you have to do X, Y, and Z, which changes from one section of the code to the next, one subtitle to the next. It allows DLR to go back through there and find all of those places and update them to say that if you're creating a rule or regulation under this subtitle, it has to go through the APA process. We have, and then finally, it also creates, as other jurisdictions have, or, you know, many are familiar with COMAR, in addition to the laws of the jurisdiction listed like we have now on DLR's website as the city code, we would also have the, what we're calling the COBRA, the Code of Baltimore Regulations annotated. So not just the code of laws, but we would have also DLR codifying the code of regulations. And that would be like the state's COMAR is a searchable database, a central repository of all agencies' rules and regulations. We would keep that. And again, this is something that other jurisdictions have that we are long overdue to have. And so I'm glad to have this opportunity to work on this bill. I want to thank the Chair of the Committee for convening a series of meetings with the Council President's Office, with the Mayor's Office, with myself and Councilwoman Snead, as well as with DLR and the Law Department over the course of more than a month, really getting through a lot of concerns about this. That allowed us to be able to prepare amendments so that we can hopefully move forward with this bill today. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. It looks like we're ready to get started. I'm going to turn it over to Department of Legislative Reference first. Tony, if you want to kick things off from DLR's.
Sure. We, good morning. We stand by our report. We very much support this bill in concept, but we're a little apprehensive that our current resources would not be able to withstand the additional duties that you'd be giving us. So our bill report does note that, and we are asking somewhere in the neighborhood, one to two additional staff members to carry out these new duties.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question, please? Thank you. Tony, in our meetings, one of the things we talked about also, and I think this applies to the Law Department as well, is kind of the front-loading of kind of the burden that this bill would create. On the front end, you would have to establish the COBRA, the whole system for codification, and you would have to actually put a lot of information into it. Similarly, the Law Department would have to review a lot of rules and regs that are being submitted by agencies, particularly in the first year, and before they come over to DLR. I know that in those conversations, we talked about the Law Department maybe needing some, maybe being able to handle that through some temporary staffing during that period. Is it also the case with DLR that there, that you feel like there would be a temporary staffing need for it, an exceptionally heightened level of work, and that perhaps after that it might become more tenable over the long term?
Well, to be sure, I think that the two staff member, I think, accounts for that potential surge in everybody rushing to get their regulations codified within that one period. I think to sustain us, we would need probably one permanent staff member from now until the future.
That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just note that you'll not get any argument from me. I've always been advocating for DLR to have more staff, and so I will continue to do so.
Let's jump over to Law Department. Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Victor Vela from the City Law Department. We are grateful to have the meetings that we had on this particular issue so we can sort of clarify some of these things, and some of them have been. I wrote a bill report that talks about four different types of amendments in here. I know Councilwoman Snead and Councilwoman Snead and Councilman Dorsey have amendments that'll take care of, I think, some of those and, or probably perhaps most. Let me talk about the amendments that I have, just briefly, I think. The amendment that we were seeking deals with the ability of the committee, as this bill is written, the committee has the ability to basically veto a regulation, and we thought that went too far. So we were looking for amendments that took care of that particular problem. The amendments, the proposed amendments that I have from Councilwoman Snead and Councilmember Dorsey are, take care of that particular issue. The next one I have deals with the elimination of obsolete provisions. I just, it's not terribly clear that you can eliminate obsolete provisions, so we wanted it to be cleared, so we have a little line that basically clarifies that, which I think is more technical in nature than substantive.
Can we jump to that one for a second?
Sure. That is in line, that is page 10, Mr. Chair, line 14.
Yeah, so I was looking at that language and just thinking, if an agency's been abolished, the agency is not able to conclude that a provision is obsolete? So does it make sense?
Well, it's not, I'm sorry.
Does it make sense to have language in there that says, has since been abolished or an agency concludes is obsolete?
That would be fine. That would be fine. I mean, I thought, I was, it was just, it was just an odd phrasing, and I didn't really, the idea that an agency has been obsolete or has been abolished, that you couldn't get rid of the regulations, I guess that probably is correct. So, Mr. Chair, I would agree with your revision there.
May I ask for clarification here?
Yeah.
I want to read this whole section here, 4404, starting on line 10. With the approval of the city solicitor.
Tell us, what page are you on in the bill?
Page 10, sorry. Page 10, beginning on line 10.
Thank you.
With the approval of the city solicitor, an agency may request that the director remove from the code a part of a regulation that has been held unconstitutional by a court of competent final jurisdiction. I'm going to say, a regulation adopted by an agency that has been abolished. So is this saying that if, I'm just going to use an absurd example, if DOT were abolished, then the Health Department could make a request that the director remove a regulation that had previously been adopted by OT, by DOT?
Hey, Victor, can you jump on mute, please? Thank you. No, Councilman, I think the example I would, let me give a ridiculous example in response to that, but part one deals with, I think part one is very straightforward, right?
Yeah, just forgot about that, yeah.
Part two, let's say, I'll give you a great example. Let's say your bill passes on the
Homeless.
Office for homeless services.
Yeah.
Any rules and regs that the previous agency that's dealt with this, which no longer exists, which is the Mayor's Office of Human Services, prior to the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, those would automatically be abolished. And then there would be a third piece in here that would say, if the Department of, let's say, for example, the Department of Public Works no longer needed a rule or reg for a program that was a relief program for the pandemic, and it expired after a year because at some point, hopefully, we'll be out of the pandemic, that rule and reg is no longer necessary, the DPW Director could say, I find that we don't need this rule and reg in the COBRA anymore. I think that's where I was getting at with it. Although, I suppose there's a fourth piece to it in terms of a successor agency, for example, if the Mayor's Office of Human Services had some type of rule and reg in place, and then their functionality is consumed by, if your bill passes this new office, then should that new office have the ability to say, well, we've consumed all that functionality, we want to eliminate a rule and reg because we feel it's no longer relevant to what we do?
My, my thought is in the case where there isn't a successor office. If Agency A becomes obsolete, or becomes, if Agency A is abolished, who is the agency then afterward to request that that abolished agency's rules and regs be eliminated from the code? Because it doesn't say that the abolished agency's rules and regs automatically disappear. It says that an agency has to request that they be removed.
Can I jump in?
This is semantics, I don't know. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue is if we still have laws on the books that need interpretation, even if an agency disappears, the law still exists, and we would still require the interpretation presumably. So in a way, we're sort of, you know, we, I think actually this is a great discussion because maybe there's some things we need to tweak with further amendments, just to be clear about it. But the situation that you're talking about, I think in most cases, we will still, we will still have the law, but we won't have the agency. Somebody will be responsible for carrying out that particular law. So I don't think we're ever going to be totally in that situation that you're talking about, but occasionally we might be. And then in that case, we would really do want to have the responsibility of whoever is the successor agency, of being able to say, well, this law really isn't on the books anymore, or whatever it is, it's been changed substantially, so we don't have to have this regulation. Which I think we have the situation where we can say the agency, in my amendment here, the agency concludes is obsolete. So assuming that's the agency that takes over whatever responsibility is for the interpreting that particular law.
So, I guess I want to support Councilman, the Chair's position here, that I think we should retain the existing language and not substitute it as in the Law Department's amendment request, but add an "or" and have both of these provisions. Is that the suggestion, Mr. Chair?
I think so, yes. Vic, what are your thoughts?
That looks, that looks sufficient to me, Mr. Chair. So I think, you know, let's go that way.
Tony, do you have any feedback on that one?
I don't. This is completely, I think that everybody is touching on the same thing, and I think it's up to the Committee as to whether you would want to add a third reason for this process to kick in.
Okay. You don't see any concerns there?
No.
Mayor's Office?
I mean, if there's no concerns from the agency, I don't believe there's any concerns from us.
Council President's Office?
I'm sorry, I'm on the phone with the President. Can you repeat the question?
Are there, are there any concerns with adding in a third option here, which would address what was in the Law Department's Agency Comments Letter, basically saying that we would be adding in an "or" if an agency concludes that a rule or regulation is obsolete?
At first, I mean, I'm sorry, I was a little distracted. Like I said, I was on this call, so at first thought, it doesn't sound like a problem.
Okay. Mr. Chair, man, I just thought of something, and there could be a subjectivity as to what is considered obsolete. I think that, I mean, having worked with the state, when an agency, when a state agency wants to repeal a particular amendment, they usually have to go through the APA process again. And so there might be an issue, I guess if the Law, I mean, I guess my thought would be if the Law Department's signing off that it's truly obsolete and not just a repeal, then perhaps it's fine. My fear would be if the agency is trying to repeal something, let's say it's extremely popular program, they're trying to repeal the regulations for it, and they're trying to use this mechanism as a backdoor for that. That would be my only concern.
Makes sense. Anyone else have anything to add on this one before we jump to the third set of issues? All right, back to you, Victor.
Thank you. My, my next concern was the Law Department has given responsibility for approving the form, the conformity of regulations with the style manual of Department of Legislative Reference. As I say in my report, the law lawyers aren't style mavens, and we really don't want that responsibility. On the other hand, I had a conversation with Councilman Dorsey just in advance of this hearing, and he was pointing out that he didn't think it would be much of a burden for us to do. My response to take a look at what the form is, one of the issues I didn't want to get involved with was basically the Law Department approving on form and then going to Legislative Reference, who really is the keeper of the form, and then Legislative Reference saying, no, no, you guys have messed it up, go back and revise the amendment. I didn't want to get caught in that sort of back and forth. On the other hand, if we basically approve the form and not necessarily all the little requirements, and Legislative Reference can, and for example, let me give you an idea of what I'm talking about. You know, if we're just talking about whether or not we have something that says, this is, this is in conformity to such and such a law, we have a title, we have that kind of stuff, but we don't, we don't necessarily pass, or Legislative Reference has all these numbering, quaint numbering systems that we need to use outlining situations. If we don't necessarily put it in that order, I didn't want to have a Law Department basically be doing all that, when I think at the end of the day, that would be a Legislative Reference function. So to the extent we can approve this language as written, I just would want to make it clear that the Law Department doesn't want to be in the process or in the, in the position of having to really delve into and rehash the rewriting of something just to make it conform to Legislative Reference's style manual.
Yeah. Well, I think that that was, that language was included in there first because the Law Department is going to be the first agency outside of the promulgating agency to ever set eyes on this proposed regulation. And they would have the ability to sort of do a first glance, and I don't think the intention was that they get every stylistic or how bill, how certain things are numbered and things like that. I, I think that it is a fairly innocuous responsibility under this bill that, I mean, they approve things for form and legal sufficiency right now. So I don't see it working outside of that sort of paradigm.
And, and as I, as I said, Tony, I just didn't want to get into a match with you guys, saying, you guys didn't do it right now. What we can do, of course, is if it, if it looks really bad, we can send it back to the agency and say, look, put it together, and then it comes back to us and we say, yeah, okay, good. So it's just a matter of, at the end of the day, I didn't want to be in a match with you guys. But if we have that sort of agreement, and I'm hoping we can keep that agreement when you and I are gone, then, you know, we're going to be okay with the language as written.
And I wouldn't anticipate there to be any disagreement, given that Section 4403 of the bill allows DLR to go back and sort of clean up very minor stylistic things. For instance, the one that jumps out is, you know, a lot of times, agencies will want to say something like, a person shall not do this. Well, you know, the form and the style that the state has adopted and that we have adopted is, the proper is, a person may not do this. And that's the, that's the kind of thing that we would change, and we wouldn't go back to the Law Department and say, I can't believe you guys approved this. We would just change it. So, yeah, we don't expect there to be any disagreements.
So where do we, where does that leave us on this one? Are changes necessary?
Mr. Chair, I think we're okay with the language as written here.
Okay. So we can, we can move past this one?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers Snead and Dorsey, do you have anything to add or you're good to move on?
I think that that, I'll express as a conversation I had with Victor before the hearing started, that we don't need the Law Department's bill report changes. I think we're okay with the first reader language.
Correct. Agreed.
Great, great. Okay, so moving on to the fourth one, which is on the top of page four. Victor? You're on mute, Victor.
I need to refresh my memory what the point is. Oh, this is, this is, our concern is about really hosting a database. As it says in my report, this seems to me an easy thing for our IT Department to do. The way this works now under the bill is that an agency sends its first draft of a proposal to us, we review it, the Law Department reviews it, and then if we approve it, then the agency puts up the, announces it on their website that they've got a proposed regulation, and they put a link to the actual language of the regulation. When I was looking at this bill, I thought, well, that's an easy thing for BCIT to basically collect from the agencies. Basically, they can write a program, I'm assuming, they can write a program that would gather those proposed regulations off of all the agencies and basically create that report themselves. And I didn't want to have the Law Department be doing something similar when it would be such a remote and easy thing, I think, for BCIT to do. We simply don't have the staff to put together a, a sort of a compendium of proposed regulations to monitor that. But in my conversation with Councilman Dorsey just before that, I said, look, as long as BCIT can do that legwork, that create a program, gather it up, the Law Department would be fine with hosting it on our, on our website. I originally had that idea for Legislative Reference, but frankly, if BCIT is able to do all that work, it doesn't matter if it's on our website or on Legislative Reference's website. I just want to make it clear that we are not in a, we're not really in a position to be able to gather that information, have the staff have that kind of expertise to do, but BCIT is.
Yeah, I think that makes, that seems to make sense to me. You know, as I read this, it's, Law Department will maintain the list, you would essentially be the keeper of the list, but the agency has some type of But the agency has some type of responsibility to post notice on their website that there is a proposed rule that Law Department has put on the master list, if you will. Um, this should be as simple as, uh, you all logging, whoever maintains your website and you have to add new content that's specifically related to the Department of Law, whoever that person is going in and just submitting on a, on an electronic form or uploading or posting a new blog entry or however it's done on the back end of, of Law's website. I, I don't think the intention here, and I don't want to speak for the sponsors, but was to ever have you come up with some technical solution that's touching every agency in, in the city and interacting with DLR and everything else. Am I correct to the co-sponsors?
Correct. And remember, this is one of the things to talk about. Does that make source work to get the information?
Right.
Yeah, it just, it seems to make-
The Councilman Risinger?
I think we have like two or five people unmuted right now.
I'm good. I'm listening. Can you hear me?
Hey, Matt, can you, uh, make sure that everyone on the phone is muted with the exception of Councilman Risinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Councilman Risinger is the unmuted caller.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey. You're on mute, Councilman.
Dang it. Um, the, the point here is simply that the public should have one central place to be able to look for any proposed rules and regulations at any given time. Um, and like you said, I think there's, this is as simple as copying and pasting some text into a form. This is the kind of thing that I could build on, you know, Google Forms in, you know, an hour. It's, um, copy and paste the rule and regulation, have a box for which agency it's coming from, and having something that can categorize these things by agency. People can say, if I'm looking for a DPW rule and regulations being proposed, let me go to all the DPW rules and regs, something like that, you know? This is very, very simple, very basic stuff. Um, and so I think, I, I think that we're good.
Um, if, if we are, if we're all in agreement, I'd still like to have then on page five, line 19, where it says, in addition, the city solicitor shall maintain an online register of all proposed. Can, if we can have an addition here, just an insertion, in addition, the city solicitor, comma, with the assistance of the Baltimore City Information and Technology, comma, uh, and so on with that line. I just want to make sure that we have BCIT's assistance in here uh, to do this easy task presumably.
That's interesting.
Sounds good to me. Um, okay, before we, um, before we jump to public comment and then, uh, discuss the actual amendments that have been proposed, uh, do the sponsors or DLR or the Law Department, Mayor's Office, or Council President's Office have anything else they want to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, um, I've been texting with Councilman Dorsey about it. Um, I do think that it might be prudent, um, uh, earlier in the conversation, we talked about, um, DLR might need some additional, um, uh, staffing, et cetera. Um, and so it might be prudent, even if it's, uh, if we move the bill today, I just want to loop in finance to get something on record from them just to make sure that we know what that would look like.
I, I think we're gonna hold off on moving the bill today anyway, uh, with the aim of getting the bill the second reader on, on September 21st. Um, I want to make sure that we have the appropriate language drafted up for the BSIT amendment, uh, that we do have a conversation with BSIT, uh, and Department of Law and DLR, so we all understand what BSIT's responsibilities are going to be here and that they're able to do it. And to your point, Caitlin, that we can have a conversation with finance to make sure that, you know, whatever needs DLR has are taken care of as well, so that we can successfully implement this thing. So I think that, that makes all the sense in the world and appreciate the suggestion. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I want to add, I would be remiss, it's Dick Turle again. I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, say that the Law Department is also concerned about the onslaught, the, the initial onslaught of, uh, of regulations in this period, uh, get, to get old regulations in place. Uh, I don't know that we need temporary help, maybe we do, maybe we don't. I just don't, we just don't really have an idea about what's coming. Uh, and that's one of the unknowns about this particular bill. We don't know what's coming initially, and we don't know how this sort of pans out uh, routinely after this bill takes effect. Uh, so it's a little bit of an unknown, uh, and it's hard to grasp exactly what the burden, the administrative burden is going to be here.
I think that's agreed, but I think we can always come back to the table, um, with council members to say, hey, we need more time to do X, Y, and Z. Uh, so I think it's, we hear you, but it's something that we should keep going, that we shouldn't slow up, and if we need to come back to the table to say, hey, update, and I think we should have updates anyway to let us know what it looks like.
Thank you, Councilman.
And in my, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, um, uh, in our conversations, one of the things that I noted was that we should be, and I certainly will take, um, you know, the role of, of leading this, um, should be asking that agencies submit their existing rules and regs to the Law Department at the very earliest opportunity. Um, we don't want all of the agents, the bill gives, and we'll talk about this with some of the amendments, is that the, but the bill gives agencies a whole year from the time of enactment to submit their existing rules and regulations for codification. Um, and so we don't want them all to be dumping them on the Law Department for review, uh, you know, in the 11th month. We want to be encouraging agencies to get them in early so that the Law Department is able to spread out their review of these rules and regs over, you know, a long period of time. Um, and the same would go for DLR. Um, the bill does not necessarily actually speak to how quickly the Cobra has to be built out, just how, just the timeframe in which the agencies have to submit their existing rules and regulations if they want to get them in, that, that, and so, um, there is leeway here for both the Law Department and for DLR to spread out, but I want to, and I want to encourage agencies to get their existing rules and regs in at the very earliest opportunity so that they can spread them out. The Law and DLR can spread that workload out over time.
Anyone else? Uh, co-sponsors, agencies, council president, or mayor's office?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. Um, you, I think you already, uh, answered my concern, but, uh, I just, you know, wanted to, to say, uh, we would appreciate, if the committee would not advance this bill today, if we could have another work session after we've had the opportunity to consult with, uh, finance and BSIT. And it sounds like that is what's going to happen, so I just, I, I thank everybody in advance for that.
Yes, sir. I think we're all in agreement on that. That's, that's the prudent approach, so make sure we get it right. Uh, anyone else? Okay, Matt, can you, uh, let us know how many folks are on to testify from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It looks like we only have one attendee from the public, um, Teresa Emilio Burge. Apologize.
I don't need to say anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think that is the only, um, was the only attendee.
Teresa, thank you very much for joining us for a, um, extremely detailed, uh, topic today. I, I didn't expect as many people to show up to the hearing as, as we did, so. Um, okay, uh, let's move on to the amendments from E2 co-sponsors. Uh, if you want to, um, what I'd like to do is take these, we'll vote on these amendments one by one. Um, if you could just explain what each amendment does before we, uh, take a motion on them. So let's start with Amendment One, please.
Sure, I'll take this on. Um, uh, Amendment One, uh, satisfies a concern, um, it is 20, a concern raised by the chair. Uh, it is 2020. There is some language in this bill that says that when listing proposed rules and regulate, regulations, an agency has to include uh, in the information about forgiving public comment, it says, uh, an email address if available. It's 2020. Amendment number one here strikes if available. We have an expectation that an agency will have an email address at which the public can, uh, submit public comment.
I appreciate you utilizing the exact language. Uh, that was my justification for the request for that amendment. Is there a motion to move Amendment One?
So moved.
Motion by Sneed, is there a second? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Could you hear me?
Yes, sir. All those opposed say nay. Amendment is adopted. Amendment number two?
Amendment number two, um, addresses the primary, the biggest concern in the Law Department's, uh, report, um, of overstepping the legislative authority of the city council, um, and what this, uh, is, scales it back from a process by which the city council could essentially reject and overturn a proposed rule and regulation to a process, um, that is comparable to the state's process, um, where, uh, members of the council could um, present a letter, um, that would hold up the process for 60 days. And, um, during that time, the council could, you know, or those members, um, who are proposing the whole, you know, or are requesting the hold, um, would be able to, you know, make a bunch of noise and get the public stirred up, or hold a committee hearing in the Legislative Investigations Committee, um, in order to draw attention to this rule and regulation. And again, as I said in my opening remarks, um, this is intended, uh, uh, as is stated in the amendment, um, the, the committee shall consider whether the proposed regulation is in conformity with the statutory authority of the agency and reasonably complies with the legislative intent of the statute under which the regulation was approached, uh, proposed. So this is not really about saying, well, I have a bone to pick with this agency, so I'm going to just be an obstacle, be an obstructionist. Um, this is really about saying the agency is proposing, proposing a rule or regulation that is just really out of step with, um, the intent of the law. Um, so this is a basic kind of check and balance process here, but not one that allows the council to overstep its authority.
Is there a motion to move that amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Sneed, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 All those, all those opposed say nay. Motion carries, amendment is adopted. Amendment number three?
Amendment number three, uh, addresses another concern that was raised by the chair. Um, and I thought this was a really good catch, um, in the bill. Basically, one of the things that this bill does is, um, particularly considering COVID and the current state of emergency, it's had us looking at, um, the adoption of rules and regulations, um, in an uncommon light. Uh, this bill allows that if a rule or regulation is adopted under an emergency state, that its effect carries on for 90 days after the conclusion of the state of emergency. And it's reasonable, I think, to expect that city agencies are going to have their hands full during a state of emergency and even for some time period afterward. And, um, while a ruler regulate, and, and there's also the possibility, and I think that we've seen this, um, with certain street closures and things like this, that there are, um, rules or regulations that come about during a state of emergency that would not otherwise come about, and that we realize along the way, actually, this is really great. We should keep doing this beyond the state of emergency. If an agency does not submit that ruler reg for permanent adoption, um, in a perfectly timely fashion, we don't want them to have to terminate the, uh, implementation of that rule or regulation on a temporary, you know, a, a temporary termination while it goes through the official process. What this amendment says is that if they admit, if they submit the proposed rule or regulation to the APA process during that 90 days, that the, that the temporary rule can extend on beyond that 90 days while the rule goes through the APA process. In practical terms, it, that has the potential to extend the rule for up to 29 more days. Um, and if there's a hold letter, it could go to up to 89 days. But, uh, beyond that 90 days, but this is, um, I think this is, it just foresees a very, very limited, um, rare kind of circumstance, but makes a reasonable provision. I'm sorry, that's a really hard one to explain. Um, I hope that I conveyed it at least half adequately.
Is there a motion to move Amendment Three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Uh, amendment is adopted. Amendment number four?
Okay, Amendment Number Four, um, again, uh, the chair is an astute observer, a detailed reader of, uh, legislation. And one of the things that we discussed, uh, over several meetings was, um, the implementation period, uh, for the various aspects of this bill and how the various, uh, timelines overlap. Um, this bill, as I've mentioned a couple of times during this hearing, allows agencies one year to submit, uh, any existing rules or regulations to, uh, be codified in the Cobra. Um, uh, and, but as drafted, would give agencies a half a year in which they could come up with rules or regulations and submit them without going through the APA process. Um, that has the potential, I'm not saying that we have bad actors in city agencies, but maybe we do. Um, and there's the possibility, an agency that has not kept up with its promulgation of rules and regulations, um, could, you know, hypothetically, write their whole book of rules and regulations in that six-month period and submit them, um, and, uh, circumvent the whole APA process, circumvent the entire purpose of this bill. Um, and so shortening that period from six months down to two months, um, you know, it allows that, say if an agency is right now in the process of coming up with a rule, um, that they can carry on the process right now, but 60 days from the time of enactment, um, they're going to have to start adhering to the APA process for the development of any new rules. Um, so it just, uh, it gives them, gives them a good buffer, but not an excessive line, the timeline that could be potentially exploited.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a motion to move Amendment Four?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilwoman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries, amendment's adopted. Victor, I want to just hop back to your, your agency comments letter. So this, the first item, we've resolved all your concerns.
That's correct.
Related to the amendments, okay? The second one, we agreed that we're going to come up with a new amendment that adds in a third option there. I think it's with Dorsey, Councilwoman Sneed, and Victor, do I have that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Tony, as I assume we will be asking you to write this amendment for us, which is five words. Do you have any concerns if we were to move that amendment now?
Just, I stated my concern earlier, I continue it, just you might want to think about a way to frame this amendment to avoid the possibility that an agency declares something to be obsolete and it can certainly, and the repeal of that normally would have to go through the APA process by just going through this avenue.
All right, so we'll hold off on that one? With that?
Yes.
But either way, Victor, you're fine with where we're at right now for, correct?
Yes, I am, yes.
All right, good, thank you. Amendment, or issue number three in your letter, I think we were at peace with this one?
We're good with that.
Okay. And then issue number four, sounded like we're going to add in an amendment that says with the assistance of B sit?
That's correct, on page five, line 19.
All right, do we? Tony, is that something you would prefer that, would it be your preference that we hold off on voting on an amendment that we don't have drafted for that until we've had those conversations with B sit?
Yeah, I mean, just it might make it cleaner if we had the discussion with B sit first rather than having to retract an amendment.
Right, okay, everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of law, that takes care of DLR. We took care of the mayor's office concerns and we've taken care of council president's office concerns. So we need to figure out these two amendments. We also need to have a conversation with B sit and Department of Finance. Is there anything left on the laundry list to get this bill to a vote in the committee? I think it's just those four items? Two amendments, convo with B sit and convo with finance, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, Matt Peters, can you pull up the calendar, please? Are we able to reconvene on Tuesday, September 15th at 10:00 a.m.?
I think, I think the health committee has hearings scheduled in that time slot already, fortunately.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
They already have something scheduled?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know what time they're, we expect them to be done, is that going to be a long hearing or?
I think that hearing, I think that's coming from our office, and that hearing is probably going to be maybe an hour, max an hour and a half, so if you do say noon.
Committee members, does that work for your schedules, noon on Tuesday, September 15th?
Mr. Chair, I think the health committee also has it 11:30.
Wait, Matt, can we have hearings at the same time now because they're virtual?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think it's possible. I'm not sure how much overlap, off the top of my head, there is between judiciary and health.
Yeah, 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 okay, all right, that's right. So committee members, are there any concerns with having a hearing at noon on the 15th?
Yeah, Eric, Councilman Weisberg, I'm good.
Yep, all right, Stokes, you good?
I'm looking at it now, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Sneed?
It's fine.
Dorsey?
Mr. Chair, I'm not available that day, but I trust that the committee, I'm not a committee member, I trust that the committee can handle this and that woman's need is here and, but I'm not available that day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Matt Peters had mentioned it, I just looked it up on Legista. Actually, health committee also has 11:30, it's one big block on my calendar, which is why I didn't see it. But they have 10 o'clock and then they have the 11:30, which is the pesticide control and regulation bill, which may take some time.
Oh, Councilman Dorsey, you're out of town till the 16th.
Yes, I'm out of town from the 10th through the, through the 16th.
Oh, your text message said, oh, I-
Oh, my bad, I put the wrong month in there, I'm sorry, my bad.
No, no, it's all good. What about Thursday? Thursday, the 17th?
Did you have taxation hearing?
Yeah, we have taxation at 10, let me look at what's on the agenda.
I have labor.
You have labor at 1?
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to have a lengthy hearing for.
But I think we can get it in on the 17th because the amendment can take that long.
You, oh, have you already heard both of those calls?
Yeah. So we can possibly get our stuff in, judiciary.
3:00 p.m. on, on Thursday?
Works for me.
Before then.
I'm tied up at one, from like one till, just right up to about three, so 3:00 o'clock is as close as I can cut it.
Matt, can we, can we go into recess without announcing when the hearing is going to be and just get, get this figured out over email this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for a work session, we can just have Natana announce it through.
All right, yeah, let's, let's do that, I'll start an email thread with all the appropriate folks. Okay, all right, we're going to, thank you all, we're now in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.